Call the April 8th School Board Meeting of St. Lucy County to order. Welcome to all of you that are with us tonight. It is so nice to see so many people in the audience and I know that a lot of you are here to enjoy our children's sing, so without further ado, if you would stand with me please for the pledge and we will be led by one of our students in reciting it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Kids at Hope pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children in need. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. And now my fellow board members will join me in the front so that we can enjoy our entertainment tonight. That was fabulous. Thank you, boys and girls. Thank you so much. The Windmill Point students, under the direction of Ms. Kimberly Turpenny. I want to take just a couple of minutes and talk to some of the children that are performing for us tonight. You seemed so excited throughout the whole performance. Tell us about why you like music so much.
I like music because it gets my, like, I really like the emotion in the music. Like, I really liked it. Like, sometimes I sit in my living room and just sing for no apparent reason.
There isn't apparent reason. It's in your heart and you love it. Congratulations, you did a great job. All of you did. There was lots of happiness, I wish we could just keep them around and keep us... And you, like, young lady, what? Let me see if I can, I don't want to block anybody. What do you like most about having music in your school?
Well, for me, it's always been something fun to do as, like, something extra to add to something, like, a day that was kind of boring will get exciting because of music at school.
What a testimony to your leadership for these fine, fine students. If I could ask any parents, grandparents, friends, relatives of any of the students performing, if you would please stand. I know you're here. I know you're here. That's right. Don't be shy. A special, special thanks to all of you for entrusting your children and for having them participate in this wonderful program. Administrators from Windmill Point, stand, stand, be happy. Thank you for your leadership as well. Okay, we'll just take a couple of minutes as the students file out and we'll retake our place on the podium. Thanks again, boys and girls. You did a great, great job. That's always such a wonderful way to start our meetings. I dread summers when we don't have the students here to perform for us. This time we have a public hearing and I will open the public hearing at this point. It references the proposed adoption of school board policies, student progression plan for middle and high, as well as the Code of Student Conduct, Rule T3. Are there any in our audience that wish to speak to this tonight? Seeing none come forward, Madam Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the student progression plan for middle and high schools and Rule T3 in the Code of Student Conduct as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second by Dr. Mills, second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor, please say and vote. All in favors?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Have this Almiss Harrison. Wonderful. And let me take this opportunity to remind any of you that might wish to be an unscheduled speaker tonight, that we have forms in the back of the room that you'll just need to fill out and get to our secretary before the actual business meeting begins. Madam Superintendent, time for our special orders of business.
Yes, it's a great portion of our agenda. We'll begin with the United Way presentations and I'd like to call forward Carrie Patrick, who will be making some introductions relative to our campaign for the current year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Yost. Earlier this year, I came before you to announce the kickoff for this year's United Way campaign, a campaign that we do support because the United Way of St. Lucy County is committed to focusing on the education, income, and health for the overall good of our community. With a goal to create long-lasting changes, the United Way depends upon the benevolence of community members for support. And this support comes in the form of donations as well as volunteerism. With that in mind, I would like to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Janice Sizemore, who has served as the liaison between the United Way of St. Lucy County and St. Lucy County Public Schools for this year's event. Mrs. Sizemore? She was really a tremendous support for this year's campaign. And it is yet another demonstration of how working together, we can inspire hope and create opportunities for a better tomorrow. So this evening, we do celebrate the contributions of our schools during this year's campaign. And joining us for this purpose is Mr. Monty Kosoff, who is the Vice President of Development and Marketing for the United Way of St. Lucy, as well as Roxanne Wells, who is the Director of Community and Workplace Giving. As they make their way to the podium, I would like to leave you with a quote from Maya Angelou. "When we give cheerfully and accept gratefully, everyone is blessed."
Thank you, Carrie. And I'd also like to thank Janice Sizemore for her efforts as liaison this year. We have very small staff at United Way and I can't say enough how much it means to us to have the volunteers at each of our workplace campaigns really help us with those fundraising initiatives. So Superintendent Yost and to school board members, I would like to announce the results of this year's Workplace Giving Campaign for the United Way of St. Lucy County. And again, we support many worthy local charitable organizations in the areas of health, education, and income, so this money will go right back into our communities, supporting many of our schoolchildren and their families, right here in St. Lucy County. The total for this year, including the student fundraising efforts, as well as the employees for the school district, totals $38,044. Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to recognize the leaders in three separate categories. And we do have a leading school in each category for elementary, middle, K through eight, and high school. So for, we'll have three pictures, so if we could have one representative from each school come up to be acknowledged and have a picture here in front of the podium, we'd appreciate it. So for the highest student campaigns, for elementary school, it's Morningside Elementary. Middle school, we have Southern Oaks Middle School. K through eight, it's the Palm Point Research School. And for high school, it's Treasure Coast High School. Thank you, everybody. I especially think that category is noteworthy because it's a great opportunity to start children at a young age in understanding giving back to their community. So thank you all. For the largest employee giving campaigns, for elementary, it's again Morningside Elementary. For middle school, Southport Middle. For the K through eight category, Northport. And again, Treasure Coast High School. In our last category of recognition, it's the combined campaign overall for students and employees' contributions together. For elementary, Morningside Elementary. Southern Oaks Middle School. Westgate K through eight. And last but not least, Treasure Coast High School again. So again, on behalf of United Way of St. Lucy County and the 29 agencies that we funded this past year, we thank the school board and the superintendent for your outstanding support. Thank you.
Thank you to the United Way. They certainly support the students of St. Lucy County and we greatly appreciate their support, the use of the dollars gathered throughout our community. Next item is the Sunrise Kiwanis recognition, and we'd like to ask President Jimmy Burchard to please come forward for, and he will issue some Sunrise Kiwanis awards at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, school board members, and Mrs. Yost, thank you very much for having us here tonight. Do we have our PowerPoint to go along? While they're getting that ready, I do, I do, I've got some, some of my members here today and I just want to introduce them. Sean Donahue in the back there, John Barbarini, Troy Angersall, and, and I forgot his name. Roger. Priest. That happens a lot. Yeah, we do. All right, there we go. Now we're back on track. Again, my name is James Burchard. Dave McGuire is our president-elect, he's not with us, and Don Nelson is our secretary. If you can go to the next slide, please. Kiwanis is all about serving the children of the world, and that's why it is a very unique bond that we have with the St. Lucy County School District, as we like to fund a lot of things that the school district is doing and we like to, to have that coordination with them. We actually have two clubs in St. Lucy County. We are the Sunrise Kiwanis and then you have the Fort Pierce Kiwanis. They weren't able to be with us tonight, but we do have a major fundraising, and this is a shameless plug that I was supposed to put in, golf tournament coming up on June the 7th. If you want any information, you can go to our Facebook page. So that's our, again, coming up on June the 7th. We do a lot of projects, a lot of service projects throughout St. Lucy County, and I'm not going to read every one of these, but we are going to do a couple tonight. One of our things that we do is Dr. Seuss Read Across America, and we went into two schools this year, and you have those? I want to call those two schools up. We went into Lawnwood and FK Suite, or Fairlon and FK Suite, I'm sorry. So if they could come up at this time, I have, we like to go in and read the Dr. Seuss book for them, but we also, we have a nice check for you for $250 apiece that we wanted to give to y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We also do a lot with the Education Foundation, so, I didn't know if there's anybody taking pictures. You all want to take pictures?
I'll take your picture, buddy.
There you go, take pictures. Oh, okay. She's on the...
I'll get you the picture.
Oh, do they want me?
Yeah.
The next, Education Foundation. This is our annual donation to the foundation. Again, that is funded by our golf turnit, tournament, did I mention that it's coming up on June 7th? So, so please go to our Facebook page. But we have a check for the Education Foundation for $1,000. Now, this is the part of that I really enjoy. Every year, the Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis and the other downtown club, we get together and we have the St. Lucy County Fair, we have the education building out at the fair. And I first got involved in this about five or six years ago, and I thought, well, you know, this is a week and I'm going to give a couple hours, I'm going to go out there and, and I didn't know what to expect. But every year, I'm totally amazed, shocked, and surprised at what I learn and what I get to see. This year was no exception. This year was just totally overwhelming with the kids that came out, all of them so excited. They run through the building and they're screaming, mommy, mommy, here's my thing, here's, and they're taking pictures. And I always remember, I always have it at least once a year, we do the, we do the voting. And I always have a child that comes in and I go to hand him a ballot and they say to me, I'm not old enough to vote. And I say, no, everybody can vote here. And they just, they take the ballot and they're all excited and they run around and they find their school and then they come over and, and I had one year, the kid went to market and the parents over there trying to show them, you know, it's right there. No, mommy, you can't be in here with me, you know? And, and he would circle the paper and he would slide it into the machine and he came in about that tall, but he walked out about that big. And it's just so exciting to see the kids and to see what this, this building actually does. And again, it's funded by our golf tournament that's coming up on June 7th that I must plug. I do want to say thank you to a couple of people, our distinguished panel of judges. It was so hard again this year. It just seemed like the schools just overdid and they just came out. There was a lot, it was, it was hard. It was a lot of deliberation, going back and forth among the judges. We also want to thank Gertrude Walker and the Supervisor Elections Office for the machines, J.D. Keaton and the St. Lucy County Fair Association for all that they do for us out there. They just, they put together a great program. But now I'm going to get to the part where everybody likes, and that's giving away some money. This year, elementary school, and again, this is so hard. If you ever want to judge, come out there on Thursday night before the fair. It is so hard to pick between these, but this year, first place went to Lawnwood Elementary School. Second place went to C.A. Moore Elementary School. Third place went to White, or Windmill Point Elementary School. And then, we had an honorary mention, you know, again, there were so many that you had to pick, but Weatherby Elementary School just did a wonderful job, so thank you. All right, now we're going to go to the middle school division, which again, was very, very tough. But first place went to Palm Point. Second place went to Forest Grove, which actually had fish, living fish. Wow. Yeah. And then third place went to Alapata. All right. High school division, and again, no easy task, but the winner went to Fort Pierce Central High School. Second place went to St. Lucy West Centennial. And third place went to Lincoln Park. All right. The St. Lucy County Fair Association. Okay. So we'll correct that error. The St. Lucy County Fair Association actually has an event that it's out of the box. And this is somebody who thought just a little bit more, went just a little bit further than, or was just, they were there, but it was, it was just so extraordinary that, that it just stuck out. So we have picked Fairlon Elementary School to be the out of box this year. And I know the slide says 500, but the check is only for 250s, so. Right. The final one, that's the People's Choice Awards. Out of 500, they had 551 out of 4,468 ballots. That is an actual record for us. We actually ran out of ballots on Friday night. So the last Saturday and Sunday, we, we didn't have any ballots, so I mean, we had completely run out. We were totally shocked. But it is a record for us, but Lincoln Park Academy won with 551 votes. But Lincoln Park Academy won with 551 votes. Well, I have, it says, "Thank you again, Madam Chairman and the School Board, Mrs. Yost, for letting us come up here. It is an honor and a privilege to work with y'all and to serve the children of this county. And we look forward to doing it for many, many more years." So, we thank you very much.
I'm actually surprised he didn't put in a final plug for his golf tournament. But we thank the Kiwanis Club. Our schools certainly benefit from the exposure at the fair as well as put the checks to good use. So, thank you. Our next item is Samuel S. Gaines' essay contest winner. So, if we could welcome Dr. Perry to the podium at this time.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Ms. Yost, in recognition and celebration of African-American History Month, students in grades 3 to 12 are given the opportunity to write an essay that describes an African-American person in St. Lucy County who has made a difference in that student's life and then explain what the person has done to make such an impact. The requirements also stated that the person could not be a family member. The essays were judged by some outstanding educators. Sabrina Woollett, grade 3 teacher at Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts. For elementary, our middle school essays were judged by retired educator Chris Taylor. And in high school, by Amy Foreman, English teacher at Fort Pierce Central High School. In addition, our sponsors for the essay contest since its inception is the Morgany Group, represented by Mr. Brian Garcia. But representing Morgany tonight and joining me at the podium is Mr. Chuck Kearns, who will also be presenting a monetary prize to each of our winners. The essay contest is named for Dr. Samuel Gaines, a true education pioneer in recognition of his 34-plus years of service to children and dedication to education in St. Lucy County. The essay contest is also a wonderful way to help students prepare for FCAT rights, for scholarship applications, and college applications, which all require a written essay. Now, even though he's officially retired from his daily service, he's still working in the trenches, making sure that we're still cruising to academic excellence here in St. Lucy County. So, please join me in welcoming our friend, Dr. Samuel S. Gaines, to help us again tonight with the award presentation. Dr. Gaines. We'll start with our elementary presentations. In third place, from White City Elementary, Daisy Ruiz. Again, in the elementary category, second place goes to Jonathan Edwards from Fairlon Elementary. And our first place winner, from Francis K. Smith Elementary, Danielle Rose Murray. And our middle school category. Yes, ma'am? Yes. And in middle school, third place, Alyssa Fernandez from Forest Grove Middle School. And our second place winner, from Lincoln Park Academy, Jewel Edwards. And from Manatee Academy, our first place middle school winner, Grishma Patel. These are our middle school winners and we'll pause for a photo op. And now for our high school winners. In third place, from Lincoln Park Academy, Jalen Edwards. She's in dual enrollment tonight, but we'll ask her sister Jewel Edwards, who was the middle school winner, or her brother Jonathan Edwards, who was the elementary winner, to come back and get her award. It's all in the family. In second place, from Fort Pierce Central High School, Terrence McQueen. And our first place high school winner, from Fort Pierce Central High School, Michael Camacho. Again, I want to congratulate all of our winners. I want to thank Dr. Gaines for joining us for the presentation and Mr. Kearns and Morgany for being our premier monetary sponsor. To all the parents, checks will be mailed to the students based on the address that we have in our system. So, if that has changed, please make sure you see me so the checks won't be mailed to the wrong address. Thank you again and congratulations to each of these winners.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. And it's always wonderful to have Dr. Gaines with us. So, thanks for joining us this evening, Dr. Gaines. Mrs. Lisa Kitts-Miller will present a donation from the Pilot Club to our Exceptional Student Education Department. Come on up, Ms. Kitts-Miller.
Madam Chairperson, members of the board, and Mrs. Yost, I would like to introduce members of the Pilot Club of Fort Pierce, Jan Smith President, Tammy Wood, incoming president, and Joan Dodd. This club has helped the St. Lucy County ESE students for many years by working with our students on a student recognition awards program as well as giving us funding to help with many projects for our students to transition into the work community. This small but mighty Pilot Club has given the ESE department more than $30,000 in grant money to help students with cognitive disabilities to become more independent, access their community. They have provided bus passes for our students to learn to ride the connector bus to and from work and materials to learn job skills that will give the students the competitive edge in employment. This group of ladies works all year long to make the funds that they share with our community to make St. Lucy County a better place to live. This year, the Pilot Club of Fort Pierce is giving us a check for $1,500 to work on a project using QR codes. These codes will help our students to be able to become independent in the workplace as they're able to use them to remind them the skills that they're doing on the job. It is our hopes in these budget crunches that we're able to support this and to have our students be able to be supported with technology rather than having to have a student with them at all times. So, we thank these ladies for their generous donation to allow our students to be independent and successful in the workplace. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Superintendent and School Board. We're very pleased to be able to do this today. It has been, in the years we've worked with this program, we've watched these students grow. And now, as they transition into the workforce, it's kind of fun to see them. We've seen them in school. We've given them an award when they were younger. And now, you see them in Publix or at Bell's or at Goodwill or somewhere working. And you can really see how this program within our district is really working. So, we appreciate it. We hope we do better next year. And thank you.
I'm going to make a recommendation and then we'll take a photo. First, I'd like to make a recommendation. I recommend the board accept the donation of $1,500 from the Pilot Club on behalf of the Exceptional Student Education Department as presented by these wonderful ladies from our local Pilot Club.
Board members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Move by Ms. Hensley. Second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
So, it's unanimous. If we could have a photo, we'd greatly appreciate it. We appreciate your ongoing support. $30,000 over a matter of years is a phenomenal contribution to our students. Thank you.
I don't want my notes.
The next special order of business is the Governor's School Library Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Mrs. Carrie Patrick to the podium and along with her, our Teacher of the Year, Heather Belitho.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, Governor Rick Scott recently announced the month of April 2014 as School Library Month. This provides us opportunities to highlight the school library contributions to Florida education. We are aware that school library programs make a measurable difference in student academic achievement. And school library programs prepare students for lifelong learning. It also enhances their reading enjoyment. This evening, Mrs. Heather Belitho, a media specialist at Oakhamic K-8 and this year's Teacher of the Year for St. Lucy Public Schools, joins us to read the Governor's proclamation. Joining her, we have Ms. Jen Bozone, who was a 13-year media specialist, who now serves as a literacy coach for White City Elementary and is also our liaison between the media specialist and the district initiatives. We also have Ms. Kelly Riedel, who is a veteran elementary teacher. And this is her inaugural year as a media specialist in St. Lucy County. Ladies?
And this is the proclamation issued by Governor Rick Scott for School Library Month. Whereas, school library programs are an important asset in the education of the youth of the state. And whereas, school library programs significantly contribute to student achievement by providing instructional support, resources, and services. And... Whereas, school libraries provide access to information in a variety of formats within the school as well as to digital resources outside the school. And whereas, learning to become effective users of information and ideas is essential as Florida's youth prepare for a future filled with challenges and changes. And whereas, promoting competencies in using new and emerging technologies is an integral part of school library programs. And...
Whereas, school library programs promote literacy and the enjoyment of reading. And whereas, school libraries are instructional partners and consultants in the teaching and learning process. Now, therefore, I, Rick Scott, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing April 2014 as School Library Month.
And here's the thing. While we very much value what Governor Rick Scott said, he said incredible things about our school libraries. But perhaps more importantly, and I know more importantly to us as school library media specialists and as teachers and parents and educators in St. Lucy County, we wanted to find out what school libraries meant to our students. So, I posed the question to our Oakhamic students, which is a K-8 school. And I know that their responses reflect what our students in St. Lucy County believe. So, I took their words and we made our own proclamation. And I have to say, I expected, there were some responses I completely expected. Like, "It's a place to get great books. It's a place to learn research strategies. It's a place to learn reading skills." And we got a lot of those responses. But we got so many responses that were deep and well-fought out. And it shows that our kids have a deep understanding of the importance of literacy, the connection to school libraries, and why it really is important to them. So, going around as a basket with your very own proclamation, because it's cool and you'll want to keep it. If you want a copy, just email me and I'll send it. But here is the School Library Month 2014 in St. Lucy County Public Schools Student Proclamation on the Importance of School Library Media Centers. This is from grades 1 through 8, and it is in ascending order. So, they start in first grade. Whereas, school libraries are important because it tells us how to be strong. Whereas, school libraries are important because libraries open your minds. Whereas, school libraries are important because we need a variety of books to choose from. Whereas, school libraries are important because there's a place you can go that allows you the chance to enjoy reading. Whereas, school libraries are important because you can learn about life, because they help you learn how to educate yourself, because it helps you imagine, because it can bring you to another world in an instant, because you can read as much as you want, because it gives you an alternative to TV and video games, because you can have adventures and not be bored, because they make students love to read. And I put it in bold because at the bottom of her thing, it was huge. It said, "Love to read." Rock on. Because books are like my family. Whereas, school libraries are important because reading gives children and adults confidence. School libraries are important because a library is like a reading chamber. Libraries are important because reading is the key to the future. Libraries are important because it helps you develop your brain. Libraries are important because it can bring you somewhere magical. Libraries are important because reading is everything. Libraries are important because we find information on what we want to know. Libraries are important because they help kids who need help with reading, read. Whereas, school libraries are important because they feed students' minds. And now, therefore, school libraries help students grow academically and personally. And now, therefore, school libraries help students grow academically and personally, providing access to information about their world and themselves. School libraries empower students to question, explore, imagine, connect, create, and reach toward their great potential. Thank you.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, over the past few years, you have heard from many of the media specialists who are extremely passionate about their profession. This passion comes from the love of reading we received as a child and the need to instill this love in today's students. Beyond this passion is the desire to collaborate with faculty and staff, parents, and community members where information is gathered and shared to make the connections with the stakeholders. The media center is the hub of the school. The media specialist is the search engine of the school. We all know the school library of the past. You walk in, sit quietly, find a book quietly, read a book quietly, check out the book quietly. We remember this routine. That was the school library when we had school librarians. As technology began to develop at a fast pace, the need arose to keep up with this change. Thus, the media center emerged, and librarians took on the role of media specialist with an emphasis on connecting information. A new paradigm shift has yet again completely transformed the media center to include the literacy standards. The role of the media specialist is now that of information specialist, technology specialist, and literacy specialist. Over the past two years, I have had the privilege and honor to be part of both the media specialist and literacy coach worlds. I was the media specialist at Bay Shore for 13 years before becoming the literacy coach at Samuel Gaines Academy and currently the literacy coach at White City Elementary. As the St. Lucy Public Schools' media specialist liaison, my goal was to bring the media specialist and literacy coaches together to form a strong literacy team. I wasn't sure how to make this happen, but with the support and encouragement from the media specialist, I found my way. I now work hand-in-hand with Carrie Patrick and Nick Zarelik to coordinate the needs of the media specialist. As the new standards have been written, there are many connections to the ELA framework. As media specialist, we engage students in reading, researching, and writing reports. We assist students with finding the correct reading levels for both pleasure reading and academics, yet at the same time, we protect their intellectual freedom. We teach them how to locate, collect, organize, evaluate, analyze, synthesize, and cite information for their projects and topics of interest, how to locate reliable sources, how to find and use primary and secondary sources, including print, and we teach Internet safety, all while aligning the standards and helping them to learn how to do meaningful research. In the last year, there have been three very beneficial media specialist meetings where several mini trainings have taken place. To connect the skills being taught in the media center with the literacy initiatives of our district, presentations have included SCALES, Higher Order Thinking Questioning, ELA Common Core Standards, Research Standards in Science and Social Studies, History Fair, Science Fair, Science Showcase Research Papers, Project Citizen, and DBQs. As you can see, there's a huge overlap of what is taught in the media center that is directly correlated to the literacy expectations of the district. As the Information Literacy Specialist, we also help students dig deeper to develop questioning skills to become active seekers and users of information. I would be remiss if I forgot to add that all the while during instruction, planning, and preparation for student research needs, lesson planning, collaborating with teachers, and skill building, the collection must be maintained. We are keepers of the collection and the administrators of destiny. Taking care of the collection includes, but is not limited to, ordering books and materials to align with the curriculum and promote the love of reading, reading reviews, updating, keeping the collection current and in good shape, serving on the literacy committee, creating focus groups, cataloging, and all of the other behind-the-scenes activity that must be done to sustain a healthy, functioning, vital media center. We are currently in the final phase of a three-year wave initiative of updating our collections. Many hours were spent weeding the collections for outdated and well-loved materials, analyzing the needs of the school, meeting with the jobbers, reviewing the books, and creating orders to significantly impact the average age of our nonfiction or informational text collections. These collections are now more current and relevant to meet the needs of the standards. All schools now also have access to digital e-resources. In our media centers, you will find students actively engaged in learning, researching, reading, and developing the love of reading, for when students do not have a love of reading, they lose interest. No longer do we hear, "Shh, you're in the library." Rather, it's, "Come on in. What do you want to learn? The door is open. Let the journey begin."
What a fabulous presentation, beginning with the Governor's Proclamation and then the development of a student proclamation, and ending with that paradigm shift, a summary of how we've moved from libraries to media centers and the changing role of from librarian to media specialist. So thank you, ladies, for that wonderful overview. It's very appropriate for Literacy Month, and it might be a good time to mention that this Saturday is Family Literacy Day to be held at the Met Stadium beginning at 10:00 a.m., so I hope many of you will participate in that activity as well. So thank you again. So that was our final order of special business, and we have a special thanks and recognition presentation to be made by Mrs. Jerger.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. You may remember that last month, at our April 3rd board meeting, Dr. Perry presented a proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month. Tonight, we would like to recognize an individual who has been a strong supporter of many programs in St. Lucy County Public Schools through his work with the Education Foundation. Mr. Jim McKenzie has been with the Foundation since 2011 and as the Executive Director. Through his work, he has created partnerships with businesses and organizations that positively impact students in our classrooms. Most recently, the Foundation has supported the Music in Our Schools Month event, and tonight, we would like to thank Mr. Jim McKenzie for his efforts.
I appreciate it very much. And Board Members, Superintendent Yost, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our board members who have been intricately part of everything that's happened at the Foundation. With that said, I just want to remind you all that on Friday, February 25th, we have our Cruising for Success fundraising event. Tickets are on sale through the website. This will help us with our mission for 2014-2015 in providing scholarships, grants, and recognition to all of the employees in St. Lucy County, and we invite you and the public to attend. Thank you so much for this award.
We now move to the reporting portion of our evening, and welcome Ms. Tillman to
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody in advance for the FCAP preps that people have done, everything that will take place with the upcoming testing for our students, be it the cafeteria, bus driver, whatever capacity you serve in, even parents at home who are going to make sure our little angels get a good night's rest, and when they get to school, they're going to be prepared for the test. So we want to thank you too for everything that it takes to make our children to be as effective learners and test takers as possible. Just keep them calm and just, you know, just tell them, "We just want you to do your best. As long as you do your best, that's what we expect." And that's anything any good parent, person, community person could do for any child, just to encourage them to do their very best. So administrators on hand, aides, whatever it is, we thank you for what you're going to be doing. The next thing, in this week's board agenda, there are lots of ratification processes that have taken place. We do appreciate the partnership that we have had with the school district to making sure that those ratification processes took place on behalf of the Classroom Teachers' Association Classified Unit. And then just a very big hand clap of appreciation to, first of all, the Compensation Committee, who was able to work well together to accomplish a great task. And then, in addition to that, thanking the Personnel Department who have worked tirelessly trying to complete a task. I have told my people, remember, humans enter information. You're human, you make mistakes, you could make mistakes, but be patient enough to work through the process. And we appreciate, on behalf of St. Lucy County Classroom Teachers' Association Classified Unit, appreciate all the hard work the Personnel Department has put into getting ready to give the information to payroll to pay the checks. It takes a team effort, it takes collaboration, it takes more than one set of hands to accomplish a task. So as we continue to work together in the spirit of collaboration, cooperation, solidarity, yea-yah, union, we look forward to continuing to make sure that we have our district be the very best we can. Knowing that we don't agree all the time makes a real happy family, knowing that we can hear each other when we don't agree, because if a family agrees all the time, there's probably some dysfunctionality somewhere down the line. And since we don't disagree, we know we can't be dysfunctional all the time. So we have to agree to disagree sometimes, but knowing that as we have to listen to each other, we cannot change yesterday, but we can press forward to tomorrow to make a difference for what we do here in St. Lucy County. I would be remiss to not mention that the legislative session is continuing to go on right now. I can't encourage us enough to look at what our Children's Services Council offers to our children in this community. We have to support each other. In addition to when they talked about the voting at the fair, it's important that if you're not a registered voter, you need to become a registered voter. If you don't want to go to the polls, become a person who sits in their pajamas and vote from home. Whatever it takes, contact the supervisor of election, have them send you a ballot, so you can get your ballots early if you like, because we don't want any excuses for no one or anyone not to vote, because everything we do is around politics, and we have to be not just talkers, but we need to be doers, make sure we do the right thing for our children, which are our future here in St. Lucy County. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Is there anyone here tonight for CWA? We see none. We will now move to our scheduled speakers. Mr. Sherrod, you may go to the podium. Mr. Sherrod is before us as a scheduled speaker tonight. He is properly before us, having met all of the details of being a scheduled speaker. Let me remind you, however, that this time limit is five minutes, and you may proceed.
Yes, my name is Curtis Sherrod. I live at 2016 Southwest Poet Street, and I'm the same Curtis Sherrod of Sherrod versus Palm Beach, I mean, sorry, St. Lucy County School Board. Members of the board, you now face a multimillion-dollar judgment. It's just a matter of time. This case is not going to get thrown out. I've been through this too long. There's just no way that it's going to get thrown out on technicality. So let me give you a little personal history about me, so you know who you're dealing with, okay? First of all, my grandmother taught me to read. I like to say she was in the first generation of slavery to go to college. She got a degree in 1921 from what is now Elizabeth City State University. She came to be my nanny when my father, who was a member of the 82nd Airborne, was always away, being a tipless spear, fighting in unknown places off the books. So rather than have her daughter raising two children by herself and trying to work, she came with our nanny. She taught me how to read. We went to Germany, came home singing one day, "See 'em there, Zulu warrior, see 'em there, Zulu chief, chief, chief." My daddy said, "Boy, what you know about the Zulu?" I said, "Daddy, it's a song." He said, "No, the Zulu were more than a song." Turns out, they were 100,000 strong, and they ran 40 miles in a day in four, when they got there right on the spot. And guess what? They looked just like me. I was hooked. I read everything that we had on the Zulu wars. Now, he was a sucker for encyclopedia salesmen, so we had three sets. Then I read everything on war. Then I read them from A to Z. Then I read all the children's books and all the classics. By the time I was in the third grade, I was sitting in class reading War and Peace, where everybody else was reading, who, by the way, I was in Germany, so most of my classmates were white, they were reading See Dick Chase Spot, okay? So by the long story short, I was at 13.1 in reading when they tested me when I went to the fourth grade, which was freshman in college at the age of nine. By the eighth grade, I did a speed reading test. I was reading 900 words a minute with 99% comprehension. By the ninth grade, I took an IQ test, which is culturally biased. I scored 145. Then I came to Florida and learned my law from an individual who wrote the standard for interstate detainments, meaning you do a crime in Michigan, come to Florida, you got to go by the standard of his case to get you out of Florida. I know exactly what I'm doing. Now, after doing battle with Palm Beach High School Board, frankly, doing battle with you people is like doing battle with the gang that couldn't shoot straight. You didn't do anything right. There's no documentation in my file, okay? None. And what's in there has been altered, and it's easily seen that it's been altered, okay? Now, I have three affidavits. One from the person who was in the classroom when this lady came in and gave me a five-minute evaluation, during which time I was following security protocol and picking up pencils, okay? Man stood right there. That's dumb. At least you sit there and fake the evaluation, okay? So you have nothing to stand on. You cannot win this case. You can play with it if you want to, but we are going to trial if you do not settle or if the judge doesn't throw it out. I'm pretty sure that he's going to basically give me emotional summary judgment, because right now, there's no way a jury is going to rule in your favor, okay? So I'll argue, I'll get my act together, get real, as the kids say, and go ahead on and make a realistic offer to end this case. To be perfectly blunt, if you had settled last July when I first brought the case, when at that time, the position was still open, I would have taken a job. I was just that desperate. My baby, who is a 4.04 honest graduate of Shredzakos High School, spent his school years, staying all campus, on the floor on a mattress because we couldn't afford a bed for her or for a dorm room for her, because I'm on disability. My wife drives 60 miles round trip. Without her salary, we would be drowning, okay? I've lost my house in Palm Beach County. I've lost my retirement. You have, quite frankly, destroyed my life over a bunch of nonsense. And if you think I'm going to back down or I'm going to let up, you are playing with yourself. It's not going to happen, and it's going to cost you between $2 and $3 million dollars for us to win, if you keep playing. Thank you. Have a good day.
We now move to the consent agenda. Board members, could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Board members, at this time, are there any conflicts that you need to declare on any individual item that may be coming before us? Hearing none, we will receive the Superintendent's recommendation.
I recommend the board approve a total of 24 consent agenda items, beginning with 9.1 through 9.7 and 10.2 through 17.2 as presented. Item 10.1 has been deleted.
Board members, we have the recommendation. At this point, are there any... At this point, are there any items that you wish to comment upon?
I'd like to comment, Madam Chair, pull out the item nine point three.
For comment?
For comment.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment on fourteen point one.
Are there any items you wish to pull for separate vote and therefore discussion? Hearing none, we will receive the comments. And Dr. Mills, on item number nine point three.
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm very enthused and very happy about the agreement that we have with the, our CTW, our CTA, and, and all the other groups, the employee groups, but I want to really make a comment to acknowledge our Superintendent, Superintendent Janelle Yost, for her diligence as well in the, in the talks and, and so forth. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge you, Superintendent Janelle Yost, for your work that you have done as a leader.
Mr. Ingersoll, your comment on fourteen point one.
Yes, ma'am. I was just, was thinking about this today, and I just found what I was looking for. And fourteen point one, two point two, in nineteen, in two thousand and eight, the district, with assistance from CELP, built a blueprint for technology. And it was very cool when CELP came in here and helped evaluate some of the things that we did. And in two, in two thousand and thirteen, the district underwent a accreditation review with Advanced Ed, which I thought was a biased report coming, and I know most of the board members did, because when you find out that the guy that was, not to slam the guy, but the guy that came down and evaluated our systems, then wanted us to go out and hire his own system that he was doing on the side. So, I mean, I appreciate his, his, his set point. But Madam Superintendent, I was just, was thinking, maybe you and Mr. O'Leary may get together and possibly think about bringing CELP back just to do an overview, or just to come back and evaluate us again. Maybe not this year, but have it somewhere in the report, because they were such a phenomenal company and did help us through, you know, just evaluating. And I know we're evaluating in other areas, I know, I was talking to Dr. McGinn, but this is sort of a different type of evaluation. And again, I appreciate Mr. O'Leary when he brought them in, just might be time to bring them back in, again, just to, to see where we're at. Something for you guys to talk about, Executive Council.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Board members, we have received the recommendation, we have heard the comments. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Hilsen, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Have it all recorded, Ms. Harrison? Okay, Madam Superintendent, it is now time for your report.
Thank you. I just have a few comments this evening, beginning with the salary migration. I know that Maurice Bonner has disseminated some correspondence to all of our employees, and that we are continuing to work with our union partners to prepare additional information for dissemination. This migration process has been long, very technical, and certainly, we appreciate the comments of President Tillman in that human error could possibly have occurred. So we need to make certain that we have dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and I know that a diligent effort has been made within our Personnel Department. But we want to walk our employees through the process, provide them with materials so that they can understand the process as thoroughly as possible, and then, of course, we will answer questions in addition to that. But I wanted you to be aware of that information, because there will be many questions, and there is a step-by-step guide that has been disseminated through Mr. Bonner as of today. And then the joint one will occur tomorrow. Unfortunately, there was a hit-and-run accident with one of our students within the community this week, and we are keeping that young lady and her family in our thoughts. That is information that we are always wanting to receive as quickly as possible as employees, as well as those who support our students with crisis intervention. And in this particular case, we know that nine-one-one received the call, and our own departments were not alerted, our Security Department. We want you to know that we are aware of that, we are working with our law enforcement representatives so that we can collaborate in the information that is disseminated. So please know that information was not withheld from any of you regarding this incident, it was just very slow in coming to our personnel, and we will continue to develop a positive relationship with our law enforcement agencies, including the nine-one-one center. With human error, we believe, just a breakdown of communication which can happen in a crisis. Wanted to mention this, that there is an art show for our high school students at Fort Pierce Central tomorrow night, and so all of our students within our high schools have an opportunity to submit and display their artwork. And so if you have an opportunity and can stop by tomorrow evening, that would be wonderful. Busy weekend, this weekend, on Saturday, I already mentioned the Family Literacy Day. We also have a March of Dimes Walk for Babies at, beginning at the Pruitt Center. We have empty bowls being prepared by students in their art classes, and will be sold at the farmer's market on Saturday morning. So it's a busy, busy weekend, and I apologize if I've omitted an invitation that came to our attention and have not called attention to it this evening. As President Tillman mentioned, we are gearing up for, for the FCAP. Our students are ready, the environments are being prepared, so that we have the best opportunities for our students to put their best foot forward. So I know that our families will make certain that our children have a good night's rest the night before, will provide breakfast the morning of the tests, and will just encourage our students to have a positive attitude, as well as do their very best on this statewide assessment. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report? Okay, thank you. We then will move to school board member reports, and Mr. Ingersoll, we'll begin with you tonight.
Just to follow up on your comment, Madam Chairman, about the accident, I'm probably sure, I was the one, one of the people that called and questioned, and I, I knew that was. And my concern is, is when that, when something does happen in the community, and per se, God forbid, your kid's in a bus accident or something, and your principal's called and they don't know anything about it, and the parents are concerned, and it's never been communicated through the proper channels, it can cause more damage and hurt feelings for that parent, looking for their child, expecting their child to be at school, and the principal was like, well, I, I don't know. And that was my concern today, is when I saw the timeline of events from TC Palm until the letters that went out, and then I was watching the emails come from transportation, and I was looking and putting the timeline together in my mind, I said, I think we have an issue of communication here. And it, and it's not an issue, it's just something that we want to be able to communicate so that we can care for our children in a better way. And, and that's why I called that in, and it wasn't, you know, anything, you know, to jump on anybody's case, is that we just want to make sure that we care the best for our children as possible, and to make sure from the Police Department to Transportation, but most importantly, to the school principal, that they know what's going on with their children at their school. So that, that was the reason why I was a little concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Move to Ms. Hensley.
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of things. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And all the flags that are on Midway Road outside of Castle, I really contend that if adults do their job, that the number of flags should decrease every single year till there are no flags flying, and we could replace that with pend wheels of wonderful days that children have had. We haven't gotten there yet, and we're not getting much assistance from our state legislature when it comes to issues dealing with mental health and concerns of families in general. So this is the year that there's more money in the coffers in the state than there have been since two thousand and six. We tried to make the case that this was the appropriate year for them to actually focus on doing something substantive for children. We're halfway through the session, so I guess there's still hope. But on that issue, Ms. Holly's been doing our legislative liaison, so she's been up fighting the battles, too. And so we, I'm not going back to Tallahassee again, I don't know if she is or not, but, you know, you, you need to know that your school board member's part of our job is public advocacy for the best interest of children and education, and we take it very, very seriously. We have a five-county work group on Monday that will give us some updates, some opportunity to share some things that are going on, and have some direction as five counties' school boards, to see if we can do something collectively to make some changes before session is over. Also, the Transportation Planning Organization accepted the long-range multimodal plan last week. We do have a template of new mass transit routes that will serve our students, we think, well, summer, during summers and after-school events. We have the money to buy the buses, we don't have the money to hire the drivers, so we will see how that goes. But we are still pursuing, pursuing federal dollars to help us facilitate that. Also, the Advisory Group for the Extension through University of Florida, on May the eighth, is having a series of events, starts seven-thirty in the morning, will end up at the winery about five-thirty in the afternoon, because it's a hundred years of taking the science that is created through the land-grant colleges out to the people in the communities, and that's what Extension does. We celebrated a hundred and fifty years last year of land-grant colleges, ours in Florida, our Florida A&amp;M and University of Florida. This year, we celebrate a hundred years of being able to take that knowledge and that research to the communities as a whole. And our Extension is extremely cognizant of the responsibility and are very, very good. They even, we have nutrition programs, all kinds of different things that go on, so we are going to have a full day of events to showcase a variety of things in St. Lucie County that the Extension does to enhance the quality of life in our county. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Ms. Hilsen?
There are so many events this weekend, as Mrs. Yost said, but I plan to be a tradition this weekend for the Autism Speaks, the walk that is headed up by Mr. Kramner and Westgate. I'm looking forward to that. I think that autism is a very, probably misunderstood situation in many of our families, and there's not a lot of support for our families that have children with autism. It's ever-changing. All of a sudden, autism was autism and Asperger's, and now I understand that there's no more Asperger's, it's just autism. So you have to be on the cutting edge, and I thank Mr. Kramner and Westgate, because they do have the largest cluster of students within the autism realm, and what a top-notch job that he does at the school. And so if you have any opportunity to run from one event to another event, stop into that event. I actually am gonna be on the way to two other events, but I am certainly gonna be there, because it's, it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. And Dr. Mills?
Again, I want to reemphasize how thrilled I am that we, as a family, have been able to come into the agreement of the two-point-six percent of the new salary schedules. It is good that we are all together moving forward for the sake of our children. And I often think of how much we have said in the past, every child, every day, and that it's all about the children. And I often think about how, if it really is all about the children, then we adults must get it together and make sure that we are doing what we need to do to work together and to look after one another within our school district. Again, I want to say thank you, Ms. Yost, for your leadership, and I, you know, we went from not being able to give a dime to two-point-six percent across the board for all of our employees. So I just wanted to reemphasize that, and as well as to the Board, for all of us working cooperatively to, to make that happen, as well as everyone else that has been diligently at work to bring this about. I wanted to give an update right quick on the Francis K. Sweet Circus that I attended last week. Mrs. Wright and the kindergarten teachers at Francis K. Sweet did a phenomenal job with the greatest show on earth. And I was absolutely amazed at our kindergarten class, who were all of the performers. So as I sat there, they were, I watched them as tumblers and lions and tight rope walkers, and it just went on and on. And those, and those young people really enjoyed themselves, and, and we, as adults, enjoyed them as well. My ninth grader, I think I got more thrill out of him, because he was enjoying himself there, and I was watching his reaction. So I know it took a lot of work to do everything that was done, and I believe that they've been doing this, Francis K. Sweet, the circus, the greatest circus on earth, has been doing this for several years. So thank you again for your hard effort, Ms. Wright, and your kindergarten teachers. Also, I wanted to give an update on the Westgate K through eighth and the Vanduza Foundation fundraiser for two of the Westgate Elementary students who have had a plight with cancer. And because of the great response and support within our St. Lucie County District family, as well as our community family, I am told that each of the two children's families received over sixty-five hundred dollars apiece because of that one-day fundraiser for that family. So again, we want to personally thank each one within the school district and within the community that came out and helped and donated with that fundraiser. And it's already been mentioned that Walk Now for Autism Speaks, this month is a month for several different things that we acknowledge, thinking of what the government acknowledged with librarians and with the library, and as well as I, hearing other areas that this, this month highlights. But we want to really remember our children with autism. Autism background says that the disorder is now diagnosed in one in every sixty-nine children, including one in forty-two boys. So it's making it the fastest-growing serious developmental disability in the U.S. And I think we should take notice of that, and if at all possible, go out and be a part of that walk, as it already has been said, there's several things that's going on this, this Saturday. But the, the Walk and the Reading Festival is all in the same location, so we can go from one and go straight to the other, and let's continue to show support to all of our schools for the great works that they are doing, and, and we look forward to all of these different events. And I think that's it for my comments tonight. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Most of you have covered my list of where we need to be, and...
I would like to acknowledge an event that has already passed, but to give special recognition to Dr. Perry and the music in our school's events that was held at the Fenn Center last week. Every year, I am just more and more impressed with the quality that our students perform with, and it was just magnificent. So, Dr. Perry, thank you. I know it's an awful lot of work, want to thank Mr. McKenzie and the Education Foundation for helping with that event financially. So many people working in so many directions behind the scenes, but wow, was it ever worth it? Thank you. And please pass along to all the ones that were guest clinicians and conductors that evening, how much we appreciated it. In fact, Kimberly Turpinning, who was here earlier tonight, led the elementary chorus, and they did a fabulous job. It was very reminiscent tonight of the quality of the work that they performed, so thanks to all for that. Another event that is happening tomorrow night, Art Mondo, is the Billy Miller for Life Art Display, which is our exceptional education students, and they portray and show all of their artwork. It's an annual event, so I, and it will be on display through, I think, May sixth. So if you have an opportunity to get down to Art Mondo, please do so and pay special attention. The very first piece of artwork I purchased for my office came from that event. It's really some spectacular things that our ESE children are... It's really some spectacular things that our ESE children are produced, so. Mrs. Hensley was mentioning that I did spend a significant amount of time in Tallahassee, and during that time, I was nominated to one of the state boards for mental health issues in our schools. So I look forward to being able to bring my background and career knowledge to that board and furthering the plight of our students, for all students that have mental health issues, so. I think that we have no unscheduled speakers to come before us, so before I close, I would be remiss as well if I didn't say how very appreciative I am to all of our staff and to my fellow board members for all of the hard work in getting our compensation and our salary schedules where they need to be. That was one of my greatest desires as a, as serving on this board, is to be able to put the human element back into it, and we have done so, and I am so, so proud of the board and the staff and all that have participated in that event. Our union partners, there was no one that was excluded in this process, and the transparency of it, I am just very, very proud and appreciative of, so. Being that we have no unscheduled speakers to come before us, we are adjourned.